Okay, I'll go ahead and call to order. Railroad Schedule Board of Supervisors meeting March 1st if the audience will join the Senate floor, please.
My pleasure. This is a flag in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First is public comment number one. This comment created for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I don't see anybody moving towards the mic. Agency reports, raising readers.
Right there.
Just not quick enough, that's all right. I'm too quick. If you could sit down and introduce yourself for us.
I'm Larry Missbrink. I farm and live in Story County my whole life. And I would like to make a comment on, I believe it was item nine. Additional items, transfer of Corps of Engineers land. My wife and I are currently property owners that that corridor has ran through. My wife's parents originally sold the property to the DOT for interstate construction. And I'm sure you're all aware of some of that. The only comment I'd like to make today is would request the Board to keep effective property owners up to date of the progress so we have a voice in what is done with this property. I've been at the request of my in-laws approximately forty years ago, started communications with the Corps, written letters to Washington to see what can be done to get the property reversed back to the original of Armstead. So again, my request today is that whatever happens, that the Board please keep the effective people in the information.
Sure. I see it in my comment. Thanks. Very good. Anybody else? Okay. Now that takes us to Kim Haner, Director of Raising Readers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you guys today?
Oh, good.
You have a report in front of you, so I'll just touch on some highlights for you all today. First of all, thank you again for supporting Raising Readers in Story County. With asset support this last year, Raising Readers in Story County has continued to positively impact early literacy and has begun to expand our programs out into the county. Our funding through you has been provided in two ways in the past year. Through funding advocacy efforts and through funding our certified guide programming. Annually, we provide about sixteen thousand free books to children in the county to encourage the joy and importance of reading. We directly serve children in need of extra support with programs like preschool reading classes and story pals. Both programs increase vocabulary and communication skills for three and four-year-olds determined by the school districts and teachers at being at risk. Fall 2015 Fast Test Course for Nevada, who participated in our story pals program in fourteen fifteen, showed that almost all of these students are now at or above proficiency levels. In 2015, we piloted a new program called Super K, which is a transitioned kindergarten program with aims of five-year-olds. Due to the overwhelming success of the pilot in which twenty-two children went through this, we will be expanding this year to at least two offerings in Ames and one in Nevada with our Nevada preschool program. Story pals will also be expanding into the county with Colo-NESCO in fall 2016, which we're very excited about. So we'll be in three different school districts in the county in 2016 with our story pals program. We hope to reach the estimated one thousand zero to five-year-olds and families with low incomes through our program. Advocacy, which is another item that you've run for us, is a very strategic priority for us looking forward. I am the first full-time executive director of Raising Readers in Story County. It's had, I've been in this position almost seven months now, or seven months Wednesday, actually. We serve all families, but we do make that extra effort to each families at risk. We have program in Eastwood subsidized housing in Ames, and in 2016, we are looking to expand that into at least one other low-income subsidized housing unit in Ames. And we are also working to continue the progress that we're seeing in the school districts that we work with. We thank you for your support and look forward to another successful year together.
Any questions?
I'm just, I'm so excited that Raising Readers hired Kim as their director of the Board. I hate to lose her from Campus Town over in Ames, but this, I mean, this is a big, big deal. I hope that we're doing what we need to be doing through the asset process for Raising Readers. I'm appreciative the group is clearly setting some huge priorities. It's a big deal. You know, every one of these kids that we can impact before they go to school makes a real difference in what their success level is going to be.
And just last evening at the Michael Board meeting in Marshalltown, covering a lot of the same areas, they were giving the reports of the impact of their program. And as I was looking at that report, I asked the question, I says, is this program only just for Marshall County? And she says, no. She said, it's comparable to the Raising Readers that you all have in Story County and so forth. And I was very impressed with the progress that Michael was able to show from the children in that area. And I no doubt, you know, this is the exact same thing you're doing because we already seen the need to expand that offering. And so I just wanted to congratulate you. And this has been how many years now?
Now, our tenth year.
Tenth year.
Yep.
Right. And so congratulations. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is consideration minutes from February 23rd.
Move approval.
Second. Motion is second. Any additions or corrections? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
To, aye. Those have been approved. Personnel actions. Gentlemen, we need to change the effective date for Tyler Blatchford from the Attorney's Office to March 23rd.
Three, two, three. Okay. Move approval with noted changes?
Second. Motion is second. Anything further? Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
To, aye. Consent agenda. Looks like all items are going to go. Group, group.
Second.
Motion is second. Anything further? Sanders?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
To, aye. Departmental reports, information technology, Florida report, Barb standing. Did we miss additional items?
Additional items, yes. Yeah. That's the big.
Sorry, Barb. Additional items, recommendations concerning the Army Corps of Engineers. Or?
Go sit down.
Yeah, go sit down. Any other speakers?
We're going to have Stephen come up.
Yeah, we're going to have Stephen first, or?
We're going to have Stephen go first. This might be right up your ass.
I missed one, so.
Probably.
Okay. Additional items, recommendations concerning the Army Corps of Engineers. Memorandum of Understanding to complete the transfer of Army Corps lands to Story County. Stephen, Orange County Attorney. Morning, Stephen.
Thank you. To follow up on my informational presentation the other day, just sort of an overview, I'll just simply ask, would you, would you like me, for the audience's sake, to give you a little overview again? Mr. Clinton was present at that time.
Well, I heard your review at the conservation board.
We did.
I, I believe that it's completely appropriate, Stephen, for you to hit the high points of where we are, how we got here.
Sure. Well, I'll try to do this very quickly. What we're talking about for the audience's information is a strip of ground. It's approximately two hundred feet wide by forty thousand feet long that lies north of Ames. It passes through the Skunk River Valley between Ames and Story City. How did this corridor come to be? And it's a long story, a story of longstanding that goes back to the forties when first efforts of studying flood control along Iowa rivers began. And that progressed up through the fifties and into the early sixties. There was another parallel interest in the United States of building interstate highways. And in the early sixties, the United States Department of Transportation contacted the state of Iowa, and the state of Iowa was asked to purchase interstate corridor for Interstate thirty-five traveling north to Minnesota. That process went into, into motion, and in the early sixties, this strip of land that I just mentioned was obtained by the pressure or the threat of eminent domain or actual condemnation. There were about fourteen parcels, fourteen separate landowners, and the United States used the state of Iowa's laws. The state of Iowa actually was the initiating party and acquired this right away. It did not transfer at that time. That those, all of those transactions were completed in around nineteen sixty-four to What happened is that during this same period of time, efforts on behalf of the interests that I spoke of earlier for flood control had also coalesced. You'll recall Congressman Neil Smith. Neil Smith was instrumental in Iowa in securing federal monies through the United States to be given to the Army Corps of Engineers, and projects such as Red Rock, Rathburn, Sailerville, and the Ames Lake were all proposed. Actually, the Ames Lake project originally had two dams proposed, one on the Skunk and one on Squaw Creek near Gilbert. That dam project was, I guess, earlier, earlier given up on. The Ames Lake project proceeded. The Army Corps of Engineers was funded, and apparently, they spoke with the federal DOT, and it took about six years between nineteen sixty-four to nineteen seventy, actual as the date when these lands were transferred from the state of Iowa and sold to the United States of America. They were then transferred to be under the control of the Army Corps of Engineers. Well, also during this period of time, lots of things were happening in science and in efforts such as the environment and agencies, such in federal agencies as the Environmental Protection Agency came into being, interests and focus on natural and historic preservation came into being, other agencies, federal agencies, and laws were passed about the preservation of historical sites. And this quarter passes through an area that was inhabited five thousand to ten thousand years ago by Native Americans, and so it has, along the right way, a number of archaeological sites, and there are historic sites. So in all, there was also interest among landowners along the Skunk. They began almost at the same time they knew the project was going to be encouraged to oppose the lake, to oppose the dam. And the records that I was fortunate to obtain reveal in just a plethora of correspondence, newspaper articles, meetings that were scheduled. And to make a long story short, the Army Corps of Engineers in and around nineteen seventy-four put the project into an inactive status, and it remained in that status up until about The Army Corps of Engineers was, I think, approached during this period of time by interests who wanted to build a lake. There were people who wanted a dam, they wanted recreation, they wanted fishing, they also wanted flood control. And in nineteen eighty-four, the city of Ames passed a resolution, and that resolution was asking the Army Corps of Engineers to reactivate their dam project because there had been a big flood. Well, it was reactivated, and then there was more controversy that went up to about nineteen eighty-eight when the project was last funded. And under federal rules, when, when property the federal government has, that the federal government no longer needs, and that includes real estate, that includes buildings, it includes equipment, it includes anything, when, when the federal government has to dispose of property, there are rules. When it comes to real estate, they have essentially a ten-year waiting period. So from eighty-eight to ninety-eight, people didn't do anything with the project, it was still in opposition. There were many efforts on behalf of many landowners to ask for the property to be returned. However, the Corps of Engineers, I think, being the Corps of Engineers, what is their business? Their business is to build dams and control things such as floods, and so I think they hung on because I think they felt as though there was still a need for that dam. Well, it never did materialize, and so finally, in two thousand and two, the project, in June of two thousand and two, the project was deactivated by an active Congress, meaning it was no longer a valid project, it was no longer going to proceed. But the Army Corps still had the lands, and again, as near as I can see, the difficulty then becomes in disposing of these, this property. And whether or not it actually meets the term of surplus property so that it can be disposed of, and if it does, it has to go through a process where the Army Corps of Engineers has to transfer, well, all federal government agencies have to transfer surplus property to the GSA, which is the General Service Administration, and they have their own procedures in order to sell property. Well, interested people here wanted that, to avoid that process, they wanted a legislative remedy, and so certain individuals contacted our representatives in Washington, Congressman Latham, Senator Grassley, Senator Harkett, and in two thousand and eight, Senator, or Representative Latham inserted a couple of paragraphs in an appropriations bill, and those paragraphs directed the Army Corps of Engineers to transfer that property to Story County, Iowa, without remuneration, meaning that Story County, Iowa did not have to pay for the lake. However, the Army Corps of Engineers was not funded under this bill. And so since that time, in two thousand and eight, the Army Corps of Engineers has been resistant to completing all of the paperwork necessary to transfer the land. And to make that story much shorter than what it really is, those include such things as a historical and archaeological study that needs to be prepared, among other things. And so coming up to very recent times, in two thousand and fifteen, in the summer, the Army Corps of Engineers responded to our efforts again and sent to the county, and you've all seen a copy of it, Neil Shaw will have the copy of a memorandum of understanding, which is what I'm here about today. And what that memorandum of understanding request is that Story County pay administrative costs to the Corps of Engineers to complete this project. And I got that, and of course, at the time I got it last summer, I didn't know any of what I just told you. I didn't know where that information was, and I didn't know how to get it. And so in the interim, I found all of this information, and that's why I can come here with great ease and sit here and tell you this rather interesting historical study. But this is, this memorandum of understanding is, in my opinion, the only mechanism to expedite the process. And now, do you have any specific questions about the memorandum of understanding, or should I just synopsize it as well?
Go ahead.
The memorandum of understanding is, it requires us to pay, as I indicated, administrative costs. Now, in the interim, in order to reduce those costs, I have been in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. I hope, I'm hopeful to go to Rock Island here very shortly and visit with representatives in their real estate division. I have prepared a rather, I think, extensive file to give to the Army Corps of Engineers to help them in the process. It breaks down all the properties, I have all the legal descriptions, I have all of the original patents, the patent from the state of Iowa, the United States. I have produced all of the legal descriptions, had it transcribed from hard copy to a disk so that I can produce that. I have large maps that detail, and they now have the advantage of GIS to make very accurate calculations as to the areas of the lands that are in question. And hopefully, I have furnished them additionally with some ancillary information such as the state of Iowa's archaeological society has prepared a study, whether or not that study will actually suffice for the Army Corps of Engineers Phase One requirements, I don't know. But those are the, those are the issues, and I'm here looking for direction as I gave you in the informational meeting. I would recommend that you sign the memorandum of understanding. It has to have a couple of date changes, but that can be accomplished, and direct me to go to Rock Island and talk with the Army Corps of Engineers. If I cannot, if I don't, if I am, if I'm convinced this is the way to go, then to present the signed memorandum to them. But if I am given information that causes me to have concerns, or if I, if I can, through our efforts, help to reduce those costs, then I think I would then not present the memorandum and then ask for an amended memorandum and bring that back. So my, my, my advice is to sign the memorandum that's been presented with the caveat that I hold it and, and make sure that, in essence, the county can get a better deal. Is that clear?
Yeah, so, so I agree with what you just said, Stephen. First of all, when I look at this, it is, it is really, really interesting to me that a law was passed in two thousand and eight directing the Corps to transfer the property to Story County without remuneration, and you say it's without remuneration, meaning we shouldn't have to pay for the ground. I take it to mean it shouldn't be costing Story County anything. Now we get this estimate that says, estimate of one hundred and twelve thousand, but it doesn't lock them to one hundred and twelve thousand, it's an estimate of one hundred and twelve thousand. I get concerned when I see things that don't have an upper limit to them, they just have an estimate. That said, I am, I firmly believe that the, the correct next step with this property, wherever it ends up down the road, the correct next step with this property is to get it out of the Corps of Engineers' hands, back to Story County, where we can start to make some local decisions on what the highest and best use and appropriate ownership of that property is. So I'm very comfortable with signing the memorandum of understanding as the memorandum of understanding lays out, which to me is one hundred and twelve thousand. If we get into this and we find out it's two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, I start to get concerned. As the memorandum is laid out, I'm in support of signing it and getting the transfer done. I appreciate the work you've done on this, and I appreciate you continuing to do the work and make sure it is what it appears to be from the memorandum of understanding. So I'll move approval of the memorandum of understanding.
Second discussion, question, comment.
Go ahead.
Without the memorandum of understanding, everything remains in limbo. Basically, it's what, based on the correspondence that we received, we've, we have disagreed somewhat that there should be a cost, but a cost is being attached here because of the archaeological study or whatever they deem that needs to take place. From my understanding, this is not uncommon when we're dealing with federal agencies. You're talking about Corps of Engineers or different agencies. And I just, without going into a lot of detail, I just got back from DC, sitting in on the Environmental Land Use Study Committee, and we were going back and forth over Waters of the US and all the different entities and how these bureaucracy layers are taking place. The sad thing about it is, is when Congress, and I believe when later when Congress got this passed through, they thought it was okay, but they're not the rule-making part of, of, of these kinds of things. So the Corps and the other entities are the ones that are kind of behind the, there's another entity that has the rule-making aspect of it. So I think that our best guess is to do what you're trying to do. I think it's still in the best interest of Story County is that the land be reverted back to Story County, then whatever happens to how it's dealt with down the road, at least as Rick said, it's going to be a local decision, and it's totally going to be out of the hands of the Corps. We've heard, and you've mentioned, that there are interested landowners that have some views regarding this area. I'm sure that if that becomes something that comes back to Story County, like we've always done, there will be an opportunity for everybody to have some input into how the process is going to move forward. I have a lot of faith in our conservation department, and they're trying to make sure that this area would be managed with the best interest of Story County and so forth. But I'm kind of disappointed that we have to even consider even a small dollar figure, but I don't see any other way out of it.
Well, let me, let me comment a little bit about that. When I was in the conservation board, I gave several options to the conservation board. One of them was a writ of mandamus, and I was very excited about it because at that time I had, had a chance to get every piece of information. A writ of mandamus, just for your sake, is a very special kind of cause of action. And what it does is it asks a superior tribunal, which would be the federal district court in the Southern District, to order an inferior tribunal, which would be the Army Corps of Engineers, to do what is required by law. And the only way it can, the only way a writ of mandamus can lie is if there is no discretion. A law, the statute that is written, says the Army Corps of Engineers shall transfer the land without remuneration. I agree with you, on one hand, that without remuneration means with zero dollars. However, when you, if you want to split hairs and say that that only is, that only is speaking to payment for the land, that doesn't have to do with their, what, what they have to pay in terms of the money they have to spend internally, then there are costs. Now, you can also look at it from two thousand and eight to two thousand and sixteen and divide that figure and say to yourself, oh boy, that's just not a whole lot of money every year that they could have asked for in their budget to accomplish this goal. Well, those are all things that cause these to be issues, and I'm perfectly happy to do that, but I'm just cautioning you about it. I've...
Yeah, I, I'm with you, Stephen. I'm a, I'm a big fan of reality, and the reality is, are there other ways we can fight to get this ground? Probably there are. Is there anything that, that you see a quick pathway for us to get the ground, other than this? I don't see it. Is there anything that we could do that ultimately would cost us less than one hundred and twelve thousand dollars? Because at the end of the day, whether, whether we're paying one hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the ground or for the stuff that has to be done so we can have the ground, the reality is we're putting one hundred and twelve thousand dollars in for roughly two hundred acres of ground. That's less than market value would be for the ground, so it's still a good deal. It's just different than I think what was intended. It is frustrating, but I think it's in the best interest of Story County and the people of Story County that this ground that is never, ever, ever going to be used either for an interstate, as it was originally taken for, or for a reservoir that we all know is never, ever, ever going to happen in that area. To have that reside with the Corps of Engineers rather than residing with the county makes no sense at all to me, and it's the reason that I... no sense at all to me, and it's the reason that I think this is right.
Well, it makes sense because, as Mr. Messingbrink said, he's written numerous letters to the Corps of Engineers. I would be surprised if you got much of a response at all from him about this.
Promises to come with the property offer that never came about.
Right.
And yes, we got your letter, that was...
Yep. And once it's back in Story County's hands, then this board can make the determination what the best use of that ground would be. So, well, it's clearly the most expeditious. A legal route, my business. We could be in court again for years.
My comment, Mr. Chair, and maybe it's inappropriate because we have a motion and a second on the floor, and we're deliberating, but I wanted to know, and I don't know, last week when you kind of brought this in to your attention, did my tox, our conservation director, have anything that he wanted to share or comment on for the benefit of the audience and so forth here?
No, he wasn't, he wasn't to mean that we have that.
He wasn't.
But this has all been presented to the Conservation Board. Mike, do you have anything that you think we need to talk about?
No, I'm just glad that we're having that conversation, that we're able to start to move the project forward. Conservation Board for years has been behind the project and trying to facilitate, trying to find a way to move this into county hands. So, yeah, the county Conservation Board is supportive of the movement.
Okay. With that, I'll call for questions. Sanders.
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Two, aye, that's been approved, Stephen. So I don't actually have the MOU in my package.
I'll get you that.
Okay.
Stephen, how thick was the paperwork that you went through on this?
It was a lot of fun. It's quite a document, or it's quite a stack of documents. I'd say about 11 inches or...
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your diligence on it, and let's get to the end of it.
You know how to get the rock out of there, right?
I think I can figure that out.
Maybe you need an X or something to help try it.
I don't even, I need Google Maps.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your work on this.
Is there another little interest, Stephen, that was...
Dylan?
Yeah, you come back next.
Okay.
After Mark. Okay.
Good morning, Board, we're studying that extension technology.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, good morning. We have our report in front of you. I just wanted to go through, officially start with the project updates. We've put a lot of projects to bed this quarter, which is good for us, but every time you put a project completed, then another one takes its place. We did do an evaluation of print services, and I mentioned this briefly, last week in our managers' meeting, we had an interested vendor come in, and we did a snapshot of the printing in Story County, and then evaluated what it cost us to print. I realized there's a lot of considerations to take into as far as, do we go with one vendor, do we try to combine some of our printing services? Right now, we have an estimate that we spend about $12,000 a month on print services. Would you like me to proceed and see if this vendor can find us some cost savings?
Please.
Yes, okay.
That's something we talked about when this board first sat down together in 2011, that we talked about this. And I think it's something we've got to get to the end. There's no question on my mind that we can save dollars, but in order to save dollars, it's going to mean that not everybody is going to have their own printer sitting right there. I think it's something we've got to look at. I think this will be another issue that the board will take up, that will make some people really, really unhappy. But, you know, it's $144,000, $150,000 a year that we're spending in print services, print and copy services. I think we've got to get to the bottom of it.
And it could be more. That was, we just took a two-month snapshot, so, you know, it could be more, it could be less, at different times of the year. One of the biggest arguments against this that I hear is, hey, I print confidential information, I really need to have it on my own desk. These, all-in-one copier printers do have codes that we can use, so if you print something confidential, it won't print until you actually walk up to the printer and type in your code. So, you know, that's an argument that we can...
Well, there's a solution to every problem except for somebody having to get up from their desk and walk somewhere to pick up their... There's no solution to that short of everybody having their own printer.
Well, and one of the caveats to that is, according to our bill this year, we should get up every 45 minutes and walk around the bill, so we can kind of incorporate that into this as well. So I will tell a vendor to go ahead and let's see what we can come with the cost savings. We did just renew the access systems printer contract at the Justice Center, and part of that was due to, I didn't see on this the document management, they're doing a lot of scanning, and they were scanning on a device that's meant to copy and to print. So they were kind of overworking that. That's why I agree with you, they need to make those changes. The second item on the list is the Intranet. Our training has been completed, we have some pages up, people are still working on this. It's going to take a while before we accept this, just like anything else new, as part of our daily results. But we are working toward, anytime anybody puts in a help desk to get it up, and we'll have to visit the Intranet to do so, so hopefully this will, this will get everybody more encouraged to create their own pages, and they don't have to have a lot. What I said the engineers doing is maybe an org chart and pictures of the people and different maps and things, so it doesn't have to be fancy, but I think it is something that would benefit us all to participate in. And as I mentioned earlier, agency document management, we have completed that project. It's kind of a long haul. We had a lot of issues with the last department, the Sheriff's Department, because we had to make a lot of index class changes to fit the forms that they were scanning in, but that's been completed, so we're good to go on that. Body camera and wireless implementation, we're kind of in a holding pattern there, which is a good thing, because it'll give us a chance then to upgrade our laptops. We're going to put solid-state drives in those laptops, which will make them faster and more robust, and then we're going to add a little more memory. But what we're waiting on is the new release of the Gold Standard software, which it doesn't make sense to install software now and then, install it again in a month. So the Gold Standard software has got a lot of new features that I think will be better for us. As far as the network updates, the DOT fiber connection for the treasurer, we've been working on that for a while with the DOT, and Transcorp has been coming out to do that for them. If I'll refresh your memory a little bit, this was a project the DOT started years ago, and I'm not sure what happened, but Story County declined to participate. Their goal was to have a fiber connection between all of the offices at the DOT. When they asked me why I wasn't getting a fiber connection, I wasn't aware of this project, it must have been VIP. So they have since then found components to provide us with a fiber connection. It will involve, there's like a microwave 10 on top of the Justice Center that does go to this building, so... They had a few problems with trying to find the right connectors for their fiber, but that is all done, and they're retesting, and it will be implemented very soon. So that's, hopefully it will make their connection to the DOT a little faster, and that's where they receive the vehicle modifications and things like that. We're also working on the E911 redundancy network project. This is for the multi-agency group. We are, we have received the equipment, and we've done the fiber testing in all entities. This would be City of Ames, Story County, and Vet Med. And just to refresh your memory a little bit, we do have a 1-gig connection right now between the three entities for our 911 network, but if that goes down, we have no backup. So what this will do is the 10-gig connection, it will provide our main source of network activity, and then we're going to use the current 1-gig connection as our backup. So if that goes down, we'll have a smaller backup, but we'll still have a backup. So we're kind of excited about this, and we did receive a grant from the 911 board, and this has to be completed by June, so we're kind of rushing along with this, working closely with one of our vendors to help us with this. So then, if we move down to the fiber replacement at the Justice Center, remember, we had some problems with that fiber, we're going to replace the whole thing. This is on hold until we get the redundant network in, because it will take everything down for several hours while we replace the fiber. The plan is to dig a new trench, put all the new fiber in, and then move the connections over to minimize the downtime. But we have to get that done before June as well, because this is the budget year that we have to spend. And our vendors currently are very bad, so we're pressing to get that done in time. We're also working on doing a network assessment for Story County. This is a free assessment offered by Cisco Systems. If you recall, I did ask for money to do a security assessment in this year's budget. I think this will go hand in hand, we'll do the free network assessment first, and that'll point us to something to look for when we do our security assessment. So we're excited about that. Just some other things that we've been working on, this is the third year for our Microsoft licensing. Every three years, we do a true-up, and it was, it's very advantageous to do it this year, Joel's been working very hard on that. With the staffing changes at Community Services and COP, we still were locked into those licenses, so there'll be some changes. They have changed their server licensing, so we're going to see a little bit of reduction in cost, but not a lot. At least it hasn't gone up. I also wanted to bring your attention to the vendor change we have for our home system. Light Edge has sold off that part of the business to Alliance Technologies, IIS, that company. Really excited with this, we met with the vendor, they want to renew the contract that we had with Light Edge three years ago, because it was a three-year contract, it will come due this June, they would like to renew it in the same terms for another three years, which I think is excellent, same price, everything. And we did get reduced pricing on some of our call centers, like the Emergency ELC and the Emerald Call Center. So they are working on that. She told me to get it to me before this meeting, but it hasn't gotten to that so far. So another thing that we're planning to do is do some refresher training, now that people have used the phones for a while, they may have questions, or maybe we could make suggestions to make it easier for them. So that's all coming down the pipe, I'm pretty happy about that. Kyle and Scott are working on a security presentation for the sheriff. If you recall, for our safety meeting last year, Kyle did a little security presentation for the sheriff's office, it was not usually tense. So we're working on something just to give them, and that will happen later in the month, and I think there's three different sessions. So they're doing a good job with that, we're kind of excited. And the last thing I just wanted to talk about was, for the Maps G Group, we are doing a site recovery project with IP Pathways, and what this does, if you recall, in September, a really big weekend, we'd have an outage because our storage had been filled, and there were no alerts. So what this will do, the Site Recovery Manager, we've set up rammers, we've gone over this with IP Pathways, different things we want to be alerted on, and we just got an alert this morning, actually, and it was resolved within a few seconds. It didn't, it didn't result in a downtime, but it was a good test for us to see that it actually is working. And we just, we receive ELO alerts, we can configure to receive text alerts. This will be like if there's a server problem, if there's a hardware problem. It's making us be more proactive with problems that could happen with our grid network. Any questions? I know I went through pretty fast.
Not necessarily on that. Something that came up yesterday in our CoStar meeting, Dr. Lucy Martin was also there, Adobe products, do we have access that all of the computers at all of the various stations have access to Adobe products?
Part of our standard computer configuration does include Adobe Reader.
Okay.
And I know we have to be careful with the versions that we send out, some of the software doesn't recognize it. For example, ProLo, when the county attorney requires a specific version of Adobe.
Well, the reason I'm bringing this question to you, and you're going to hear about this a little bit later, a lot of our discussions sitting around on offer has been made through CoStar to the Iowa Association of Counties for $200,000, that all 99 counties can have access to all Adobe products, you know, for that and for this amount, and not, and so it's not going to cost, so something that they cost probably $10,000 for an individual county, or, excuse me, $1,000 for one county would probably be the total amount of cost compared to a $20,000 to $30,000 cost. I don't know if this is going to become a reality or not, because we have to look at what mechanism that ISAC now has that will allow this to take place, but we're going to take a closer look at that, because it could be a cost savings. And we also know that the County Attorneys Association is requesting some service that ISAC is going to be looking at and providing some service for them, as well as Dr. Bruce and Atlas and so forth. So this is one thing. And then there's going to be a survey that's going to be coming out again. University of Nebraska Omaha consultant was at our last two meetings, and we worked some things, and what we're really trying to do is capture the magnitude of technology and how it's been implemented throughout the state, realizing that there are many counties that don't have the luxury that we have of having the benefit of an IT department and so forth, and yet we're trying to figure out how we can bridge that gap. So I told them that I would be leaning on you and Dr. Martin, and one or two other people that we could designate, because there's a component that they want to capture, the county's perspective, and then the other part of that survey was conservation. For example, they have a remote site, and so how does conservation, website usage, everything else, all tie in? So there's some questions that I want to be able to understand a little bit better, because the sheriff, for example, has, don't, have a website that they put up, and how all of that flows through you, and whether it flows through you in terms of, are you the main source, your office the main source of management, or individually departments also doing some management things in that area? So I'll do a follow-up discussion once I get some more information regarding this, just so that we could add just to the differences that exist among our counties in general. But I'm, I was very pleased with understanding how far advanced we are compared to a lot of other counties. But there are a couple things that's going to come down the pipe that I have a certain lack to have your expertise and value in sharing. If there are things that I should be putting on the table for discussion that would benefit, you know, not only us, but counties similar in size, so...
If I could add to that, I did, I did take a survey that I believe was sent by the ProLo people to the county attorney's address, I forwarded it to me and asked you if I would take it. It was eight questions, just basically asking if it were available, how many licenses would you need. And a lot of that was guesstimation, because the Adobe Reader, the basic 10.0, whatever version, is free, and it is installed on every laptop, computer, everything in the county, and that allows you to read PDFs. We do have, I would say, less than 10 licenses, counting why people who want to make changes to PDFs, and then that would require either Adobe Standard or Adobe Pro, or, excuse me, Adobe Pro, or, there's a higher one, I don't remember what that is called, but anyway, that cost is about $300 per license, so that's where we would see some savings. I don't see that we would benefit the most from that. I think the people who need to modify Adobe already have those licenses, but I do think it is a good effort, and like I said, I participated in the survey, and I totally feel that way.
Thank you. I'll keep you posted.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Next, discussion of property titles, parcel 0403, 300 through 105, and 0223, 130 through 500. Stephen Holmes, County Attorney.
That last one should be $30,000, I put that $500, that should be...
Oh, all right, okay.
Let's do that one, let's do the, let's enroll in first, which is the... It would've been alive, so you can see it. Charlie was kind enough to do this for me, put this on the, on the graphics. What's highlighted there, this is in rolling, this is a 15-by-37 piece of ground that nobody owns. And how that came to pass is, I went in and researched the old pile of transfers of all of the surrounding properties, this house, this house, this house, and the one above that you can't stay up here. And back in the day, certain attorneys used to use a practice of describing real estate by saying, "All this except that," in other words. And so over time, they made errors, and 15-by-37 foot piece was accepted. And what I'm going to recommend is, it's gone to tax sale, the county homes, there's about a little bit under $300 in back taxes on it. But I, unless there's strong objection, I'm going to approach this property owner here that has a little shed right here that kind of sits on a corner of the property, and I'm going to approach this property owner, because this property has a little, sort of a, an addition right here. Logically, it looks like it should belong to this house or this house, rather than this property. This property like ends right here. And so I'm going to approach these two people and say... And so I'm going to approach these two people and say if they don't object, see which one of them would like it and then recommend to you at some point that you pay the taxes on it and then it can transfer over. If there are no questions about that.
What if they both want it?
Well, if they both want it, then I think they're going to have to bid. I think we should, we should make them see who wants to pay.
How many years did it take to get $300 in back taxes?
This has been, this has been many, many, many years. It wasn't even discovered until our more modern real estate system. It had just been simply overlooked. I think people thought they owned it. I mean, it's mowed. I think these folks think they own it, but they don't. And I don't think they're aware of it either. And like I said, it's gone to tax sale and nobody's, nobody's appeared. I don't think anybody's made the effort to contact them, but I go now. And let's see, how do I use that? This next one though, this next one is the good one. Now what you're looking at is a, is north of zeroing, 105th Street. I think that's what it says.
You're covering mine.
Thank you, Philly. This is 105th Street. This is east-west. And if you see the little demarcation here, the little lines that were put in by our GIS system, this is a 66-foot right-of-way, a quarter-mile long, which the county maintains as a county road, but the county doesn't own it. This acreage here, back in the day, was owned by a man by the name of A.P. Cowsor, and he owned ground all around him. I don't know that he owned this quarter section, but he owned this one and this one and this one. And through a succession of owners, he sold the acreage, moved out, maintained this and sure as a right-of-way. And then if you jumped up and went north up here to the top of this next section, there's another, there would be another of one of these odd lanes that is still in existence. And back in the day, you know, they, they listed it in terms of rods and it was, they actually thought it sat on the section line, the center of the road, but the center of the road doesn't sit on the section, on the quarter section line. The quarter of the section line is the northern boundary. So actually, when they first described it, they misdescribed it, saying it was the north two rods of this section here. And then they forgot about the south two rods, and then later on they added that in. They got the north two rods, this, and then they got the north four rods. Well, now it's properly, we have it properly described, but nobody owns it. It's 66 feet wide and it's a quarter of a mile long and it serves this house.
I just want to show hands on how many people know how many feet are in rod. All right. Thank you.
Sixteen and a half.
That's how far apart our fence posts are, so that's how I know.
Okay. So this piece serves only this acreage. Now, back in 1951, it first comes on the engineer's books and Patty in the honor's office, they have a new book that's set up, the engineer's books. And so it appears on, in a 1951 drawing, but again, it's drawn incorrectly. They actually have it splitting the section line when actually it lies to the south. And so when it came on the engineer's books in 1951, that's a curiosity, and I haven't had the chance to go back in and look to see how that happened. I have my suspicions, but I need to confirm it. But in any regard, A.P. Cowsor moved out and he died and these sections sold and this was accepted. It never was included. And so it went to tax sale. There are two private tax sale holders at present time, one outfit out of Minnesota and one outfit out of, out of Devonport, Iowa. And again, there's no strong objection. I'm going to contact these two because they only paid $61 for this entire stretch on both sales. And a lot of times that happens when you have a private tax sale purchaser, they have an agent that comes and shows up and the agent just, whatever is available, they buy it. And I don't think they realize what they bought. And now, now there are delinquent taxes on it because now I think they realize what they bought and they don't want it. So they stand to lose their money. And again, I think what we should do is probably buy it, pay the $61, get it, and then let me approach these folks who live in the acreage now. The only question is whether or not we want to continue to maintain it. I know Darren doesn't want to maintain it. It's a quarter mile and he has problems. It's a beautiful, nicely maintained gravel road, but I don't know that we have any obligation to, seems how it's not ours. But again, that's kind of a decision up to you. But I'm going to recommend that we...
But if we bought it, it becomes our property, right?
It does become our property. Or I can approach this, this owner here and tell them, "Well, you should buy it from these two private tax sale holders and get yourself a lane." We could do that way too. I could do that first.
So are we currently maintaining that as a gravel road?
Yes.
But we don't know.
We don't know. And that's not a good idea.
Even the company will come up.
Add another recommendation. This today, received a utility permit on that road for 10 new power poles that goes back to that homestead. There is existing power poles, are just going to replace them. I assume the utility originally thought that easement would do that, that this would turn that over into private power poles, whether the utility company would be in charge of property, and I don't know that. So at this point, I don't have the authority to prove this utility makes this not, sort of, count property.
Well, back when they, back when they first put in the wind, wind field up here, they came up, whatever road, what is that number?
That'd be 710.
710. They came up 710th on the east side. They got to here, and that was my first contact or exposure to the fact that we didn't own this because the attorney for the power company came up and he says, "Well, we've done a type, we did a search here and county doesn't own this." And so I think what they did is they jumped across the road. They're over Hanesman. I told them, I said, "Well, you should just go across the road and come up on this side and then go over here and then go up again." And I think that's what they did. So where are they going to put these roads?
On the north side, all the way back because there's 10 power poles I believe that gives that access.
If I'm the landowner, why would I agree to anything that would stop the county from maintaining that road?
Oh, good point.
I believe they purchased it in 2008. The present owners, the present owners.
Right. We don't have a place in the county that we don't maintain a road to a residence.
It would have to be private.
Private, absolutely. But what I'm saying is these people bought this off of a county-maintained, then-end road. I don't know that, I mean, I've never heard you present a mechanism to us where we would ever stop maintaining a road that leads to a private residence.
Well, the trouble is, it's just sold in 13 and 14. I don't know, I don't know that we realized that we didn't own it.
I completely understand the reality that we don't own it. And I, what I'm saying is, if you go in, so Stephen, you go see that landowner and you say, "Hey, I've got a great idea for you. You can have ownership of this lane all the way out." Oh, by the way, the county's going to stop plowing it, the county's going to stop maintaining it.
Well, some farmers have quarter-mile rights, you know.
Yeah, but I didn't hear you tell me this is a farm, right? This, all the land is owned not by this person.
No, correct. This, this owner just has the acreage.
Maybe they'd be interested. Would you be interested in maintaining a quarter mile up to?
Well, no, it depends. There's a certain, there's a certain aspect that appeals to somebody because now it's not a public road. There's, really it's not anyway, but everybody's always thought it had been. So if everybody thinks it's a public road, then you have access. You can use that, you can go down there and drive it down.
That brings up a lot of issues, you have to connect with the mailbox and then on Zion to the end of the road.
But, I mean, I, I, I mean, it has a certain amount of appeal to know that, yeah, this is, you know, this is not a public road. I own this all the way out to the resident north-south road and I can put a gate at the end of it, do whatever I want to do. No, as long as I got to maintain it, put the crap on.
Well, my problem is legally, it's not our road.
Right.
And if we maintain it and we do things to it and something happens on it.
Right. I'm in complete agreement that what it is right now cannot stand either. The county's got to own it and continue to maintain it, or it's got to revert, we've got to get ownership to the landowner and then we stop maintaining it. And all I'm saying is, I don't believe it's our decision. I believe it's the landowner's decision. I don't think we can force them to take ownership of that ground for us to stop maintaining. I completely agree that this can't be in private hands unless it's in private hands of the people that own the property or it's in private hands and maintained by somebody else who grants an easement to the people who own the property back there so that they can continue to access there.
Well, for instance, if you approached that, I can't remember the name of the farming outfit that has the quarter section right here, which would be technically the logical owner. If you ask them, "Do you want an additional X number of feet of farm ground?" Do you want an X, an additional X number of feet of farm ground here because it's available? Now, they might buy it. But then they have to grant this person, this owner, they, they would have to give them an easement. This person, if they didn't give them an easement, this person could sue them for an easement, would be well-established. This road then would transit, it begins to be like Orwood Farms, something. But then they would be responsible for this. I don't know that they would want that.
Right.
To me, again, there are long farm drives. That's not unheard of. But this, this owner, I would think, would want to own this because they don't own it and I don't know that they know. So I, again, I'm going to go up and have a chat with him.
What you think is that if he's not interested in taking our ownership, you think that the county should take ownership and continue to maintain?
I don't, I would prefer that the county didn't have to maintain a quarter mile that basically services one home. Absolutely, I'm all for that. I just don't know how we'd get there unless the landowner is okay with it. I don't like that we're maintaining, oh, I think there's all kinds of liability problems with us maintaining a road that we don't own. So I don't see the status quo as acceptable. I just don't know that we can force a landowner to take a piece of ground that, that they don't want. And so I appreciate your point of view that, "Oh, it'd be great to have my own land and put a gate out there." I look at it and I say, "We get eight inches of snow," and I'm sure this is not high on our priority list to get a grader out there, but we get a grader out there at some point. I've got somebody taking care of it for me. I've got somebody putting down rock every fourth year or whenever we go in there. And it is basically a private life.
Right.
So I'm getting all the advantages without having to maintain.
Somehow the road, we have a road right-of-way layer that the DOT also has, and it shows the right-of-way actually extending faster than down-ways. We actually maintain all the way down.
But that's all incorrect.
We're currently doing that. We don't know how it got there, but it's incorrect.
Well, it is absolutely worth, it is absolutely worth us getting the property back into county hands. I believe that's the first step. That property needs to come into county hands and we do that through, you said there's two entities that own it based on the tax sale.
Well, if we, if we do, Mr. Sanders, you have to remember, then it's a much better argument for this person to say, "Well, you own it, you take care of it." I think perhaps the best thing to do is to approach this owner and say, "You realize, we just realized we don't own this. You need access." The, the two tax sale owners at present have now, are now in arrears. They haven't paid the current taxes on it. I think, my guess is, because they now realize what they bought and they don't want it. So they stand to lose their 61 bucks. So I think it's an easy argument to approach this guy and say, "All you need to do is to come up with 122 bucks as yours." Then I'm sure they'd sell because they're going to lose their money as it is because it's going to come to tax sale again and they're going to lose their 61 bucks.
But in this case though, with tax sales, there's no way that they can lose access to the...
These, these, this, this owner has a statutory right to access to the property. So no matter who owns this, they have the right to have access to their property. If, if a different owner gets it and keeps it and they, and this owner needs access, they, they would have to necessarily pay for it. So my, my thinking is, they're going to have to pay for something somewhere. And so why don't they just pay the 122 bucks and get the lane?
So is there any access, does anybody that farms either one of those quarter sections, north or south, is there any, is there a field drive off of that that goes into those two fields?
This section and this section? No. And so contacting these owners too, they think that's a county road. They would probably want to have access. This, this quarter section, this quarter section, this quarter section are all, this quarter section, this quarter section are probably access.
And Darren, how much would it cost us if you wanted to be a good neighbor and put some new rock on that road before we decided we're going to turn it over to the landowner?
We actually did last year.
You did?
Yeah. It's a little over a quarter mile.
I, I think we need to approach the landowner first and say, "Here's the deal. You know, we don't, we don't technically own this, we just found this out and, you know, we're going to stop maintaining it because, first of all, it's, we don't own it and it's a liability, the fact that we're out there maintaining it." I don't know, and Stephen, you would know better. What kind of claim is this acreage owner going to have when he bought that acreage thinking full well that that was a county road and he was...
Well, whoever did is abstract. I mean, in my opinion, he'd probably have, he'd have a good, he'd have a good complaint against whoever did his abstract out here because they could not have found that this has an easement to it.
Right.
Is it probable?
It is.
Incredible.
There it is. Kind of fun. Patty helped, thank Patty. Patty helped us go back and look through all of the deeds. Patty, it's gone.
So you'll go have a conversation with this person?
I'll go have a conversation. Okay? I'll let you know.
Yeah. We need you on the agenda more. It's fascinating when you come to speak.
Pictures, that's right. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Mark. Public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take action on the comments. Through the requirements of the open meeting, we may do so in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody who can put their mic down, the seventh committee, Wayne?
Ted, I just did a, attend a meeting yesterday with CoStar. And a lot of information will be coming back to the county a little bit later regarding the survey and some of the future challenges that we're going to have. We're in the process of updating our strategic plan that has to be presented through the ISAC Board in 1st of July. And the last time we had our strategic plan was in 97, 2007. So it's long overdue and it needs some work. And then the others, I'll just maybe bring up under proportion of an announcement more or less. I'll just wait.
Pass.
Sure.
Well, you don't, I don't, wait, pass.
Oh, yeah. I, I really passed.
All right. Me also. Announcement, Wayne.
Okay. At the meeting in DC, former Governor Bill Sack and now Secretary of Ed came and spoke at a forum and he presented a challenge called the White House Rural Council. The National Association of Counties presents the Rural Impact County Challenge. And what this is, is he's asking for counties within the state of Iowa to join forces in this challenge and seek to recognize and support counties making a difference in the lives of children in rural counties. And Iowa... And Iowa, of course, all of the state of Iowa is classified as rural and that's why it's appropriate for us to consider it. What this would mean is that county leaders would be asked to pass a resolution identifying rural child poverty as a priority and work with local, state, and federal entities such as schools, health, and social service providers, state and federal policymakers, children and families, and other stakeholders to develop and refine an action plan to achieve local impacts. And the, some of the benefits of that would be the recognition of the RICC material, Rural Impact County Challenge, a weekly newsletter from USDA with rural-focused research and funding opportunities, and an opportunity to participate in monthly webinars with senior administrative officials. And since he is Secretary of Ed from our state, he came to Bill Peterson and myself and says, "Story County, I'd like you to strongly consider joining other Iowa counties." And then I got to thinking, there are law agencies that focus on children and poverty and so forth, and I believe that this would be something that would not be anything out of the ordinary for us to, you know, further explore. So if I get your blessing, I'd like to maybe get more information regarding this and then see at later time if we would like to pass a resolution and reach out to several entities and agencies that work with youth and children in our community to be supportive of this.
Sure. Absolutely.
I am fighting what appears to be a losing battle on this whole per cap method of funding mental health services. Just to give you guys my perspective, local governments, county governments in particular, have never funded services on a per cap basis. We've always got it based on a value of property basis so that people who own equal, properties of equal taxable value pay an equal amount toward a service. Now with this new regional model, we're talking about charging based on the number of people, not the value of, of the county. It's an entire, value of property within the region in this case. It's an entirely new way of funding a service. I think it creates some, some real inequalities in terms of funding the service. I'm battling that at the state level and like I say, I think I'm fighting a losing battle, but I wanted you guys to be aware that, that I will battle on that and you'll see, you'll see some of my emails from time to time on, on why I think it's such a bad idea.
Well, we appreciate your efforts.
Do that.
And I would just like to make mention that the assessors, the budget, public hearing for the assessors' budget is 5:30. 5:30?
Today.
5:30 tonight. Here. Hope that's on your calendar, Wayne. With that, I think a motion for adjournment. Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all is in favor. Aye. Here.